Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Heath present our monthly financials as well as our annual appropriation. Quickly going through our monthly financials, we are trending about $200,000 or $300,000 less on revenue collections than we had projected in the May forecast. As I explained last month, this is primarily because of the fact that we had to reclassify some restricted funds back to carers that we had originally put into our fund based on some updates that we found. Expense wise, we're $3,718 worse than forecasted, which is pretty impressive.
It's really close.
It won't stay that way. I did want to point out on the next slide, our revenue at this same time last year were down $3.2 million. This is because a TIP payment that we received from the city didn't come in in August like it did last year. It actually came in on September 1st, so it'll be recorded in September, so that will take care of itself. It's really just a timing issue. And then if you look at our expenses to May forecast, and again, this will change once we do our November forecast, just a reminder, because we compare our expenses versus our approved forecast at the time, which is May. We're $3,000 higher, $4,000 higher than we expected, and this does include, if you remember, the carryover for the buses that didn't come last fiscal year. So, I mean, we're actually below spending for the actual year to date, but with the fact that we have to, we will pay for those buses if they arrive this year in this year, because we're cash basis, we have to account for the expense when it occurs. So, we're trending pretty good, which means we're sticking to our budget. So, just wanted to point that out. Obviously, when you look at appropriations, the easiest way to explain to the community is it's creating our budget for the year. We do that with a lot of discussion. That process starts back in January when we approve the tax budget for the year, and we have a follow-up in March, and then we start working with our superintendent and his administrative team and our principals to develop those budgets, which we then provide a temporary appropriations in June, which over the last few years, this is the second year, I believe, that we've done it, where we basically budget at near 100%, which was a change in appropriations that we had done under Mr. Wilson's leadership to just kind of set the budget when the fiscal year starts, because our fiscal year starts in July, and it seemed silly that we were only, to me, my personal belief, is that we were budgeting the final budget in September, but we are obligated by law to do a final appropriations by the end of September, hence the reason why we approve it now. It has changed a little bit since our June appropriations, because things have become clearer with regards to staffing, because we run our first payroll in September on the 5th, so we're able to get more accurate numbers from a standpoint of salaries and benefits, which we'll see here makes up the majority of our budget. When we look at it from our strategic plan, obviously, what guides us is the fact that our job is to maintain and enhance fiscal stability by focusing on short-term and long-term planning. This is the first step in that process. We are looking at our appropriations that then will guide our November five-year forecast update that we will present to the board. I believe it's in November 21st. We're a little bit later this year because of OSBA, and we'll present that in that week of, the third week of November. We're always looking to explore options for alternative revenue to maximize our existing personnel, facilities, and resources. And lastly, we ensure a continued balanced approach to our budgeting to make sure that our resources are balanced to maximize opportunities across the district for all students. Our budgeting principles are that every decision that we make should be made within the context of our five-year forecast, because we know that it's not just a one-time decision. That decision has a trickle-on effect and really impacts everything that we're going to do in the out-years. Secondly, there's management dollars attached to every dollar that we, management options, excuse me, attached to every dollar that we spend, and we look at that, that every dollar that we spend should add value to teaching and learning, and we aggressively focus on our most expensive areas of our budget, which are salary, benefits, special education, and our facilities. So, as we develop our budget and we have those discussions, we always look at those areas, and we know that, you know, in the, in the long-term, quality is always cheaper, because if we don't purchase quality materials or, you know, invest in quality roofing materials, for example, and we take the cheaper route, we're going to have to replace that roof sooner, or whatever aspect that we're looking at. So, we do that. It drives our, our budget process. We have lots of discussion at the level. This is not my budget. I'm just the one blessed to present it. It is the budget of the leadership team and at the helm of our superintendent and his, his leadership team to make sure that our students and staff and community have the resources that they need to be as productive as possible. That being said, I'd like to break this down. Mr. Lynch is really trying to move me. In, you didn't do that to Dr. Glavine. I would expect you not to do that to me. The, our revenue is broken down into, you know, main areas. The main source of revenue for us in our district is, is our local taxpayers. They account for 73.5%. The state government is about, you know, 22% in the form of state aid as well as homestead and rollback reimbursements that we receive from the state, and we have some intermediate sources. And then again, this is just for the general fund, so we do have a small portion of federal money that goes into the general fund. That does not represent, as I know we've had this discussion a number of times, so I think it's worthwhile to point out here, the $7 million in federal aid that we get that does not go into the general fund. Those funds are separate from the general fund. They don't go into the general fund, so they aren't represented in this graphic. That is much different than the graph that you see on the pie chart on the next stage that says that the average for the state is 42% of the local taxpayer is, you know, accounts for, excuse me, the tax, local taxpayer accounts for 42% of that revenue, and the state accounts for 43%. That's because mentors deemed a wealthy district based on our property valuation and our median income and federally adjusted gross income, and because we're considered to be wealthy, we receive less state aid, and then that burden falls back to the local taxpayer. If you're looking at this chart, I have it in place for the board and the community just to kind of see our trends in, in revenue. Last year, as I explained, we received $110 million. That was primarily because of increased investment earnings that we had as the market has destabilized and you, we cannot invest in the typical stock market. We have to invest in specific, very safe, liquid investments. So, as things become more volatile in the stock market and those interest rates shoot up, treasuries and yields and various forms that we invest in, we see an increase on that investment income, and we're seeing now rates anywhere between 4% to 5% returns, where two, two years ago, we were seeing less than 0.1%, 0.2%. So, we saw a big spike in investment income, which benefits the district, as well as we saw people paying their taxes earlier in the first half tax collection, which is the second half of our fiscal year. So, we expect the local sources to, to adjust accordingly on that, but we're still expecting high investment returns, and with the new state budget being approved in June, we are expecting some increased revenue in state funding, which will account for us to be at, we are expecting to be about $109 million. So, we're expecting to be relatively close to that number moving forward. This graph just kind of shows that over time, our revenues don't really change much. We all went through a reappraisal in fiscal year '21. Our house values went up anywhere from 16% to 18% when you got your appraisal from the Lake County Auditor. Just as a reminder, we don't see that growth on local tax revenue as a school district because of House Bill 920. That gets adjusted down, and the effective millage rate actually decreases. The district only sees a small increase on inside millage. So, it's, it doesn't generate a lot of additional revenue for the district. We do see some. It's anywhere from $500,000 to $800,000 depending upon our calculations. As we look at, and we start to transition to expenses, for us, the primary driver of our expenses is salary and benefits, so we have to look at student enrollment when we look at creating our budget. And if we look over the last six years, you can see that our enrollment has dropped from about 7,500 to about 6,800 students, so we've seen about 700 students decline enrollment. That trend is consistent not only with the county, it's also consistent with the state of Ohio, that we're seeing enrollment trend changes just because enrollment has dropped over that same period, and we saw that coming with regards to our enrollment study that we did back in February. We like to break this out, or I like to break this out into grade bands to kind of see, is it going to level off, as we are expecting it to with our enrollment study that we did again back in February. And the key indicator to me is looking at that blue trend, which represents our kindergarten numbers, because obviously, our kindergarten numbers drive everything, and as those numbers start to level off, and you can see that they are leveling off, and they're starting to stay consistent, we'd expect our enrollment to kind of level off at that, that range of, I'd say, 6,700 or 6,800 kids is what we would expect, and that's kind of the trend that we're seeing with regards to our enrollment study on the low end. We will see, you know, a slight decrease, because our senior classes are still obviously bigger than our kindergarten class, but one of the things I will point out to people is if you look at trend data, as Mr. Heath and I do with enrollment, your kindergarten numbers are always small, and they, classes get larger as they continue, the cohort continues to go up. So, you'll see kids start to come in because they either move in, or they get enrolled in school, or as they switch from elementary school to middle school, and maybe they went to a Catholic school, for example, and then they, they will come back in middle school, or they went to Catholic school K through 8, then they come back in high school, and you see your freshman numbers jump up a little bit. So, the trend is actually that the cohorts increase over time, not actually decrease, just as a point of reference. So, the most important area with that is, is our staffing numbers. So, we, we have started to track, and we've done a lot of work on this in my office along with HR and IT, as we've adjusted and switched from payroll systems to clean up our payroll numbers. Mr., or, excuse me, Dr. Glavine referenced EMIS earlier, which is the state reporting system that we have to categorize our, our staff, whether they're a teacher, whether they're a professional other, which means they're a school psychologist, or a therapist, or are they working as a tech person, or an opposite. There's codes that get assigned to everybody. We've worked a lot to clean those up. So, this chart kind of looks at everybody who works in the district, whether they're paid out of the general fund or not, because not all of our staff is paid out of our general fund. Some of our staff is paid out of federal funds. This chart here is, looks at totality of everybody who works in the district, who gets paid by the district, whether, regardless of the fund. So, this is not general fund staff only. I think this is, for me, it was the way I could get the most reliable staffing data to be the most consistent was just to look at all the funds. And as we've cleaned it up, you will notice some fluctuations from '23 to '24, and I would say that's not because necessarily we, in, for example, in, or '22 to '23, and I'll just point out transportation. We didn't, actually didn't go down five transportation drivers. There was people who were previously classified under transportation that have been reclassified somewhere else because they were actually a better fit, and it could have been they were a secretary, but they, because they were the secretary of transportation, that they were just classified as transportation. So, as we clean that data up to be more consistent, more accurate, you'll see some of those fluctuations from '22 to '23. The, the key is, is that we look at the numbers at the bottom for all funds, and you can see that over the last three years, we have continued to decrease our staff as we've adjusted to that enrollment changes, as we kind of recalibrate from COVID, because you saw an increase in '21 when we had, the first year back after the COVID year, and we were only in school, a couple days a session at the middle school and the high school at that time, if you remember correctly, we were doing online the other times, and we were K through 5. We were in school four days a week, but we added a whole bunch of extra teachers so that we had low class sizes to keep kids spread apart. Once we've moved past that, we've really tried to right-size the district. What I, you will see the carrots on '22, '23, and '24 as a note, because in those numbers are the teachers that have been hired to support students who have learning gaps as a result of COVID. Those staff members are not paid out of the general fund. This is the last year we will have those staff members in this projection, and we have currently 25 staff members that are being paid for out of ESER funds, and I'll show that on a separate slide, but we will have an immediate reduction of 25 staff members next school year from '24 to '25. So, when you come back next year, it'll look like we have 25 less staff members. That will have an immediate decline in staffing. Net impact on the general fund is actually going to be $0, because they are not paid for out of the general fund, but they are included in that 997. So, that number is what I'm saying, if you're listening, is that's an inflated number because it doesn't relate to general fund. So, I don't know how else to say this. If you don't hear me today, there's not 25 extra teachers. They're not paid for out of the general fund. You're just choosing to say that they are, they're not. It's clearly denoted here that those 25 people are not people who are going to be here next year, or they're paid out of the general fund. But they are represented in this number because they're included as part of our federal funding that we have. I like graphs. I think they explain things pretty quick, easily to people. The red and the blue is the most important areas on there. Because we're a service industry, we provide education to students, and everybody here provides a service to make sure that we can educate students. 80% of our budget comes down to salary benefits. The other major portion of our budget goes into purchase services, then supplies, and then our third largest is transfers. If you remember, last year, we had that big transfer. We had four, you know, we transferred $14 million out. That piece of the pie was much larger. It was like 14%. So, it squeezed everything else. Well, this year, like as I told you, everybody, it's now condensed, so now we see the rest of the, the chart kind of normalize back to what we would expect as a normal trend. If you want to know where our exact amounts are by object code, which goes back to those areas that is showed, because our 100s are our salaries, our 200s are our benefits, our 400s are our purchased services, those actual dollar amounts are in this chart. The thing that I think is most important is that if you look at the highlighted numbers in the line that says totals, our total expenses that are budgeted currently are $114.3 million, which is a negative 6.8% increase, or 6.9% decrease, excuse me, from the prior year. We knew that was going to happen, though, because as we've said a number of times, we had a large transfer last year that we knew wasn't going to happen this year because we weren't going to transfer that out. So, I think what's more important then is to take transfers out, because you have to normalize your data, because I could pat myself on the back or, you know, sell it as the district, hey, we decreased the budget by almost 7%. Congratulations. And, well, that's, we did. I mean, that's, that's one way to look at it, but when you want to look at actual trends and be consistent and compare apples to apples, you got to back the transfers out either to the capital improvement fund, or in this case, our large transfer this year, 3.2, is to pay for the severance and the incentive buyouts that we had for our employees that we spoke about a number of times. It's going to save us upwards of $10.5 million over the next five years. You then can compare year-over-year spending to really look at that growth. And I think what this slide shows is that our budget to actual spend last year is only growing at 2.09% or 2.1%. We all know inflation's much higher than that. So, the fact that we've been able to control our budget growth just on actual spend from last year to at 2%, I think is, is a testament to the work that the district's doing to continue to be fiscally responsible, is, because we all know historically, because if you were here in July, I shared where our budget started in last fiscal, the last couple fiscal years, and where it ends in actual spending, and we never, no matter how hard we try to be as accurate as possible, we never spend what we budget, so we're probably going to actually grow less than that. But that's to be determined, because we have to make the estimates based on what, the data that we know today. Just a graphic representation of that, so you can see just again, from a, you know, year-over-year trend, if you're someone who likes to evaluate to make sure, because I, I like to use this graph to say, okay, here's what my budget is in '24. How does it compare to out-years? Does anything stick out? Is there any area that seems to be larger than it should be, smaller than it should be? Can I explain all the differences between the colors? It's kind of a check that we do to make sure that our budget is, our appropriations are correct, and this just confirms that we're in line. And what I would say, too, if you were to draw a trend line on the first three years, we're actually flattening that expense curve by controlling costs and keeping it less than it would be if you were just to look at a trend line that you put on the first three years. Again, if you take the transfers out, because that's that top light blue is, is part, if you take those out and normalize everything, again, you can kind of see incremental growth, which we know just because of inflation, is going to exist. So, you see relatively flat revenues increasing expenses, so we can all see where that's going to end up here in a couple of slides. Spoke to this earlier, the ESER subs, or ESER teachers that we have that are not paid out of the general fund, they're paid out of actual federal funding that we receive from the federal government in the form of ARPESER funds. We have 1.798,629, so $1,798,629 of ESER funding left. We're budgeting that for the 25 teachers in the elementary and the middle school to continue to support those students in closing those achievement gaps. That is not coming from the general fund. Those salaries and benefits are paid for out of this grant. Whatever money we don't use on those salaries and benefits will be used, as it was last year, offset costs associated with crossroads for social, emotional support, because there's only specific funds that we can, specific, excuse me, things that we can use these funds for is defined by the ARPESER grant. Key point here is if we're expected to spend $114.3 million and we have $109 million of revenue, we are projecting a deficit spend of a negative $5,346,366. We never like to deficit spend. Obviously, that's not where we want to be, because that means we're spending down our cash reserves, but in Ohio, based on the way that we fund schools, that's what we call the levy cycle. You have revenues, when you pass a levy, that's when you can ratchet up your revenues, and then you, expenses will continue to creep up, you're, you do your best to control them. We've only asked for new money, for general operating money, once since 2004, and that was in 2016, so in now almost 20 years, we've had one new money levy with regards to general operating dollars, and at this point, we're deficit spending by about $5.3 million. And I think what is impressive about that, if there's anything impressive about it, is the fact that we've been able to reduce our deficit spend from three years ago. So, we've been able to control our costs to keep that down, so it's going to help us stretch out and push off the next general operating levy moving forward. So, in summary, we expect to deficit spend, like I said, by about $5.3 million, which will reduce our general cash balance from $55.9 million to about $50.6. As everybody knows, we have two levies on the ballot. The first levy being issue three. Issue three is a 2.5 mil additional levy for general permanent improvements. It's going to collect about $5.6 million annually, which will cost the homeowner $88 for every $100,000, and that is a five-year levy that would commence in 2024. The goal of that, the purpose of that levy is to ensure safe and well-maintained schools, which is going to fund our PI projects that I'll share for here. Just as a reminder, our last permanent improvement levy was passed in 1988. It collects just under, just over a million dollars a year. If we were to adjust that value to this year in July, we would need $2.8 million to have the same spending power that we had in 1988 for that $1 million. Obviously, I think everybody in this room appreciates that. You can't purchase, and the dollar doesn't go as far as it did back in 1988, yet our costs associated with maintaining our facilities and upgrading our facilities continues to I've said this a number of times, I like to make sure that we have a logical reason to justify any of the things that we do. Carnegie Mellon did a study that says to address the inadequate investment in school facility maintenance, and they said it's about 2% of your replacement value. Our total insured value now is over $300 million. I think you could argue that it would cost us more than $300 million to replace our buildings. However, I wanted to use a number that I could justify, so I'll use the total insured value being $300 million, which means that we should spend about $6 million annually on just maintaining our facilities to keep them in good working order. You heard Mr. Heath say that our youngest building is 50 years old. I appreciate the fact that you said that that was young, by the way.
I remember when they built, when we built it.
I just turned 53, so, yeah. You weren't even old. But, the reality is, is we need to continue to maintain and upgrade those facilities, and every, and how we do that now is because obviously, we know a million dollars does not take care of that. So, if you could go to the next slide, Mr. Lynch. We use that million dollars, and then we subsidize the remaining balance out of the general fund, because general fund dollars can be used on anything, there's, with, with board approval. So, let me be clear on that. I mean, but we can, there's no restriction on what you can spend a general fund dollar on. Permanent improvement levy dollars can only be spent on anything that has a useful life of five years. So, when you think of that, think of bricks, buses, balls, books, things that have an expectancy there. We have transferred last year $14 million out of the general fund into a capital improvement plan, fund, to help offset those costs with the capital improvement plan that we have and that we've been working on for the last few years, as well as communicating out every June. We also, last year, under Mr. Heath's new leadership, committed specific dollars for safety upgrades with the approval and the recommendation of the board, as we continue to figure out ways to, as Mr. Heath alluded to in his, not alluded, stated in his update, with regards to vestibules and door security and film and the like, continued increase in cameras or replacement cameras and so on and so forth, to earmark at least $2 million for that. We were able to offset that increase by savings from our workers' compensation fund. We've been funding that. We're self-insured in workers' compensation. We have a nice reserve that we've built up on that, so we're able to not continue to pay into our own workers' compensation fund, because we've funded it to a safe reserve to the point where we can give ourselves what we would refer to as a premium holiday over the next few years to offset that cost increase, to, to set money aside to that, which is attributed to the fact that Mr. Wilson started that fund, which was just a sound fiscal management on his part to be able to do that and not have to pay into the general workers' comp fund that many schools or businesses do, because we are self-insured. And that will allow us to offset those costs along with the classroom renovation, but we will need to, to, continue to fund, if the PI levy does not pass, we have to budget $4.2 million in fiscal year '27 and $3.3 million in fiscal year '28 to continue to meet the needs of the district on the facility maintenance and upgrades that we have planned. We also generate some revenue from our scoreboard and advertising revenue that we have started this past school year as well. Just to reiterate, here is the plan for fiscal year '24. The highlighted yellow shows the addition of the safety upgrades for the vestibules. Again, just the roof placement alone at shore costs over a million dollars, and that's not even the full roof, that's just a portion of the roof. We spend another $400,000 on just maintaining paving and concrete across the district. Again, when you have, you know, 11 school buildings, a service building, and a board office, there's, that pavement wears out from buses alone, driving on those, so we have to make sure, probably a lifecycle of a typical paving job is anywhere from six to eight years is what we try to get out of it, along with maintaining the sidewalks that we have throughout the district. We have some flooring that we need to take care of. We keep an emergency reserve in the event something happens like a tornado, where we have units that we may have to replace or things like that. We're starting a three-year phase process of renovating all the windows and doors in the high school, because they are the original windows and doors, so they're just not efficient. And as we continue to look at safety upgrades, we need to address those. That's a $1.2 million project that will occur over the next three years. We're finishing the ceiling and wall updates at Fairfax there. We have on the books right now, because our gym floor is the, one of the original gym floors at the high school, cannot be sanded down anymore, so that is on there, and it would be, behoove us at that time to consider replacing the bleachers, because we're doing the floor, so doing them at the same time is the most safe way to not damage the new floor that we later put in to do the bleachers, plus we have some concerns with the longevity of those bleachers as they've, we've experienced some issues recently and that we need to address. Again, fiscal year '25, continued safety upgrades. RTU is rooftop unit replacements. Again, replacement at shore and ridge, over a million dollars. Paving and concrete at $300,000. The reserve that we set aside, our $1.2 million roofing, or, excuse me, window and door replacement at the high school continues. Continued parking lot improvements on the campus of $682,000, because we didn't pave the entire parking lot when we did it two years ago, because the prices were higher than we had anticipated, so we need to finish that. We have some miscellaneous projects that throughout the district that we're going to continue to do in classrooms. And we have to account for our contingency and soft costs from a budgeting standpoint. Same thing in twenty-six. Things I'll point out is we have two elevators in the district that need to be upgraded, because they've reached their life and they're, they're breaking down quite frequently. So we need to, you know, fix and replace those to keep them functional and for our students and safe. Roofing at Lake is going to be one point two million dollars, almost one point three. You see paving. We have some additional concrete that we know is going to be needed at that time. So we added two hundred thousand dollars to that. Finished the last year of the window replacement at the high school. And we have a MHS family consumer science renovation that we have on the books for almost eight hundred thousand dollars to renovate those spaces, because those are one of the few spaces that we have not renovated at the high school yet. That's now fifty-plus years old that needs to be replaced. I know Dr. Glavine has put in a grant for that from Career Tech. So our hopes is that that grant gets approved and we can take that off the books and spend that money someplace else and in some other learning spaces throughout the district. But until we get word that we have received that grant, which I believe Dr. Glavine could even be by October, correct? He gives me the thumbs up. So that would be something that we would adjust off into the future. As we get into twenty-seven and twenty-eight, what I would say is some of the areas on the right are areas, things that, you know, that would be potentially areas that we would consider addressing, but we, you know, they're not as high of a need as some of the areas on the left. So those will continue to change, because it are our last two years and we don't know what's going to be needed in, in five years out. So those would be areas that would be flexible. Again, you see the five hundred thousand for safety upgrades continue to occur. We have a roof replacement at Fairfax. It's almost one point five million, six hundred thousand dollars in paving and concrete, more rooftop units. We need to replace the football turf, because it'll be thirteen years old. So we have that budgeted in. We do set aside money each year for that in a replacement fund. So that will be money that we, again, we budgeted for, that we know that that expense is going to occur. There's some stadium garages that are becoming dilapidated. If you drive by the stadium where we store a lot of our equipment for, to maintain the facilities with regards to our tractors and things like that, shingles have started to blow off. They're starting to get holes into the wood. So there's some, you know, if, there's nothing else that supersedes that at that time, those would be things that we would consider. I would really like to consider a stadium LED lighting project, as well as an LED lighting project across the district, just from the electrical savings that we would incur on that. So we, at some point, we need to consider how to phase those in as well. So we have that set aside as well. Safety upgrades, soccer turf will be up for replacement. One point eight million at Orchard is the roofing estimate in fiscal year twenty-eight. And then some potential areas that we would look at, at the stadium would be that. I would expect that those would probably fall off, because there's other things that we'll find that we need to spend that would supersede that. But when we're looking at five years, we're kind of rotating through. That's what we tend to have planned now. The other thing that you've heard me mention is that we currently spend out of the general fund. We have vehicles that we need for our maintenance people. We have a maintenance crew that has vehicles, whether it be our plowing guys, our grounds team, whether it be our electricians and plumbers, they all have vehicles that we have to maintain and upgrade. We have them on basically ten to twelve year cycles as well. So we have a plan for those for improve, to be replaced, because it becomes more cost effective to buy a new vehicle, so that keeps our costs down on repair and maintenance. So we have those on. We have buses that we buy every year. We have a fleet of almost seventy buses. We replace five a year. So that gives us a life expectancy of about thirteen years per bus. That exceeds the typical life expectancy of the bus, but because we have such a strong transportation department and mechanics that work in our bus garage, we feel that that's a reasonable replacement cycle for those. You can see from fiscal year twenty-three to twenty-four, buses have gone up astronomically. We saw an inflationary increase of from five hundred and sixty thousand dollars to almost seven hundred and fifteen thousand, seventeen hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, just because costs have gone up in the last few years. Mr. Lynch and his team do a great job making sure that our technology plan is cost effective and, you know, that we have one-to-one devices, K through twelve, along with our staff and all of our network and our hardware that goes along with that. They map out a, a plan for that. You can see that we're averaging about eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year in technology that comes out of the general fund that could be taken out of a PI fund. And we're spending anywhere from, on average, about a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year on furniture throughout the district with regards to continued upgrades. If you think about the number of classrooms that we have and the grade levels that we have and just making sure that we continue to upgrade and make sure our furniture is in good working order, we're averaging on, at, each year then about one point eight, one point nine million dollars on purchases that could be spent out of a permanent improvement. Again, those exceed our current level of one million dollars. So if, the reason why we put the PI levy on is because if that was supported by the community, we could remove those one point eight million dollars in expenses out of the general fund, which would then take that hundred and fourteen million dollar number down to about a hundred and twelve. And we'd also be able to transfer back to the general fund some of the money that we transferred out to support the capital improvement funds, which would give us a one-year spike back in revenue, as well as make sure that in the future, we're not transferring money out of the general fund to support the improvements and upgrades that we have on the slate, which would be a net change of about six point seven million dollars a year. The key thing here to me is that last November, we saw that we were looking that we'd be in a negative cash balance in fiscal year twenty-seven. Based on the changes to staffing and the early retirement incentive that we had, along with some assumptions that we changed with regards to safety and workers' compensation, you see the gray and the black lines are relatively close. I think it's important to point out to the community that the red line would be if the PI levy passed, we'd be able to transfer again some of the money back to the general fund, reduce those expenses in out year. And it puts us in a much better fiscal position, almost at a cash balance of thirty million dollars in twenty-seven, which would then push off the need for a general operating levy away from, right now, we're looking at twenty-five maybe, to at least twenty-seven ideally. Again, so that would be two new money levies that have been approved, one specifically for permanent improvements and one for general operating in two thousand and sixteen, since two thousand and four. That's a pretty decent life cycle of levies for twenty years, twenty-three years, which puts you at about eleven and a half, which is atypical, because I'd say the average is probably closer to five, three to five years, depending upon the district. Issue four is the renewal levy from two thousand and four, equates to about fifteen million and sixteen thousand dollars, or two hundred and thirty-eight dollars for every hundred thousand dollars. It is not a tax increase. We're putting it back up for ten years. The one that is expiring now is a ten-year levy. So we're basically just trying to renew it for what it was. These funds are used for safety, security, direct classroom instruction, student services in the form of nurses, counselors, media specialists, diverse and well-rounded extracurricular programs, transportation and daily expenditures such as utilities, supplies, purchase services, and et cetera. So basically, everything that we talked about just a second ago. It's not a tax increase. It does equate to thirteen percent of our annual revenue. And I know I will get this question, what happens if this doesn't pass? And I'm not saying this is going to happen, but I like to put things into perspective. Fifteen million dollars is thirteen percent of our budget. That's a big chunk of revenue. If we assume that eighty point two percent of our budget is salary and benefits, which I showed you that graph probably about fifteen minutes ago now, so if you can think back. If I take that, because I like logic, and I take fifteen million dollars and take eighty percent of it, it comes out to be about twelve million dollars. So twelve million dollars would have to come out of staffing, realistically speaking. If we look at our breakdown of the percentage of staff that's admin certified and classified, and I take the average salaries of those employees, which you can get off the CUP report, which is what I did, and I include their health care and benefits, that comes out to be, we would need to reduce three point seven one administrators, fifty-eight and a half, or fifty-eight point five five certified staff, teachers, and sixty-eight point nine seven classified staff, which is custodians, bus drivers, secretaries, so on and so forth. That would equate to a reduction of a hundred and thirty-one point two three full-time equivalent staff members. And that would just reduce twelve million of the fifteen million dollars. You would still need to reduce an additional two point nine million dollars to get to the fifteen million dollars of revenue that would not exist if this levy doesn't pass by the end of two thousand and twenty-four. Not saying that that's what the cuts would be, but when you're like me and you like to grasp and understand and conceptualize what does fifteen million dollars equate to for the district, that's what it equates to. And if you were here in two thousand and four, which a lot of you were, that's about the number of staff members that were laid off at that time. The difference was, is our staffing numbers in our ratio to students was out of whack. We were increasing staff members as our enrollment was going down. We've, we've definitely right-sized that over the history since two thousand and four. Dr. Hoynes did a fantastic job with that, with Mr. Wilson. Mr. Miller did a great job. Mr. Porter's done a great job with that. And Mr. Heath continues to do that work to make sure that we have that. So I think it's important then to look at, and this goes to what we've done to kind of control that expense increase, the five point five million dollars deficit spending, which if we were to look at what we were projecting, maybe just on inflationary alone from when we first started deficit spending two years ago, when we were at seven million dollars, we've actually reduced that deficit spend. And how have we done that? Or how have we controlled the costs? Or how have we pushed off these levies from two thousand and four to two thousand, you know, now twenty-three with just one new levy? Is we've done it by consolidated buildings. We've redistricted. We've reduced staff proportionally with declining enrollment. The last negotiations, we had substantial concessions with healthcare changes for the staff that helped us control one of our largest increasing expenses. We've actively pursued alternative revenue sources. We got the Stride Grant back in two thousand and fourteen, which was about thirteen point eight million dollars, which paid for this room that we're sitting in here at no cost to the taxpayer. It helped us renovate the majority of the, the core classes at the high school at no cost to the taxpayer. We received the safety grant to help us purchase the one million dollars in safety equipment based on the need of the district from our evaluation that we received last year. Mr. Lynch and his team have secured over one point three million dollars in technology grants that have helped us reduce those costs. If you're unaware, we provide shared services to local districts, districts, excuse me, in the form of payroll services and grant management that brings in a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. And we provide other support services that bring in another two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars a year. So each year, we're generating an additional three hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars in revenue that many other districts aren't. Over the last two years, we've been able to secure over a hundred and seven thousand dollars in revenue. That's actually money in our pocket that we have. It's not people owe us that. We have, we will have received that, or will be receiving that this fiscal year, based on the contracts that we have. And Mr. Porter and Mr. Heath have helped us reduce our budgets by ten to five percent respectively the last two years. Because you've heard me say, if you've been showing up, and I know that many of you have, because I recognize the faces or we've had conversations, this isn't just about asking for additional revenue. This is, we also need to reduce our budget to continue to control our costs, to make the plan that I proposed to the board and the community work. So I think it's important to share that with you tonight in the context of what we're doing. I think it's also important to share with you, and this will be in our update that's coming out of my office, that you should all be receiving in the mail, is our comprehensive fiscal plan, community plan, that we will stay with regards to our fiscal year twenty-three finalization. It shows that in Lake County, at, for last fiscal year, Mentor was at the bottom half. And when you look at effective tax rates in the county versus all the other county districts, and we're at the top, you know, top of the, from an academic standpoint. So I think we're getting a pretty, you know, I would say a good return on your investment for the students that we have, for the tax dollars that you're spending. We know we have areas of improvement. That's why we show up every month. That's why we have the discussions that we have, academic and financial, right? It's, it's, it's never, the work's never done. We're constantly looking for ways to improve. I would point out, this does not include the vocational millage that districts like Painesville City, Riverside, Madison, Perry, and Fairport Harbor pay. They're actually paying an additional one point five mils than is represented on this. I didn't include it. I'm actually going to start including it into the future, because that's a tax that they pay, because they're involved in Auburn Career Center. So all those communities pay one point five mils additional for their Career Tech program. We don't pay that, because we are part of the compact with, through the work that Dr. Glavine and his team and Mr. Heath do to ensure that our students are being educated for that. And he shared that with us earlier. So I'd be happy to answer any questions or share any other information that someone on the board may have.
Could you mention why Perry's is as low as it is still?
Perry's is, yeah, I mean, that's, that's, that's a great, that's a great point. Perry has not had a, has never passed a levy. They've never had to. They receive money from the power plant, which basically funds their schools from that. So they, they have never passed in the last sixty years, since, you know, nineteen seventy, I think it's three or seventy-eight, don't quote, it's on one of those two numbers, that when we kind of went from that standpoint forward, they've not had to pass a new money levy. So they're at what's called the twenty mil floor, because you can't, in Ohio, you can't fall below twenty mils. So in actuality, as their property value goes up, they see an increase in revenue, because that would actually drop their effective millage rate, right? Because as property value goes up, effective millage goes down, so that the homeowner doesn't see an inflationary increase. But because they're at the twenty mil floor, they actually see that increase.
So no House Bill nine twenty for them?
They actually benefit from House Bill nine twenty, because they see an increase in revenue, because they're at the twenty mil floor.